And we will go to our last appeal of the day. What is this one? This is 2016-732. You're up.
All right, Ben Diamond, planner trainee, presenting appeal 2016-732. Evan Sweeney Usher, appealing via denial of commercial medical cannabis cultivation registration application 2016-732. Biden, planning director. This site is located out on 18702 West Rainbow Road in McCallum Hill. It's 5.03 acre parcel, zoomed unclassified. The registration was for a mixed light grow with 22,000 square feet of total canopy. This application was denied for failing to satisfy the posting requirements, the cultivation area security requirements, as well as failing to comply with other federal, state, or local laws. Specifically hazardous electrical work was identified at the site, an unpermitted hoop house, unpermitted grading, and failing to pay the Measure C tax. A compliance inspection was conducted on March 21st, 2017. At this time, they noticed that the current registration document issued by the planning department was not posted. And as you can see, the fencing there is shade screening. There is no fencing behind it. So the cultivation area was not secured by inadequate fence or locks. You can see there's no lock on that gate. Here we see the cultivation area. There are a number of T-posts scattered about, but there's no evidence of a fence surrounding the entire thing. See another shot of the cultivation area. See the shade cloth going there, but stopping, no fencing with the shade cloth or continuing on from where it stops and going all the way around the cultivation area. There was extension cords being used for what appeared to be somewhat more permanent electrical applications, which is hazardous electrical work, as well as cords running across the parcel through some puddles to the unpermitted hoop house. And this was also identified by code compliance as hazardous electrical work. And here's just a shot of the inside of the hoop house, which was not permitted. And the applicant was given 10 days to correct these. Nine days after the 10-day window, they submitted some correction photos. Here we see the application pending certificate posted on a gate near the cultivation area and then on one of those posts near the green gate we saw earlier. Neither of these postings are in compliance with the urgency ordinance as it's not on the adequately sized signboard or accompanied by reflective material. Here we see the cultivation area. It appears that a fence has been put up around it, but these photos do not adequately show the entire cultivation area. So it does not support that the entire area has been completely fenced by a continuous six-foot tall fence. And there is not a close enough picture of that gate to determine if a lock was actually installed on it. And here's a pile of Romex cable next to a plug, which I assume is the one that code compliance took, but it does not show all of the hazardous electrical work. So it does not satisfactorily show that the violation was corrected. And here is a permit, a partially completed permit for the hoop house. And you can see that some of the documents were stamped "received by building", but there is no record that these applications were ever submitted. Additionally, there is no evidence that an engagement letter from an engineer or anything has been submitted to public works in regards to the grading that was done on the site. The corrections that the appellant submitted were submitted late. They did not substantiate that all the corrections had been completed and none of the permits that the appellant was instructed to get were pulled. And to date, the appellant still has not paid either installment of the Measure C tax. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a couple of questions. Have you received any response from the applicant to the January 19th, 2018 notice specifying the lack of fencing and the lack of posting as violations?
I have not.
At the time of the March 21, 2017 inspection, were there live medical cannabis plants at the site?
I don't believe so. I think all of the vegetation that's visible in this picture here-
That one there shows some plants in boxes.
Yeah, I think that's mostly just native grasses that have sprung up in the off-season.
And Officer Watts is here if you do have any questions about what he may have seen on the site during the inspections.
That's all I have. I have a question. The ordinance says that failure to pay the tax after demand for payment in full shall constitute grounds for registration, permit, or certification revocation. I don't see the demand for payment in full in this, in these documents.
The Measure C tax is supposed to be paid in two installments.
Oh, I understand that, but in our statute that we're dealing with, it requires that there have been written demand for, or demand, excuse me, it doesn't say written, demand for payment in full and failure to pay the tax after demand for payment in full can be grounds for-
Pursuant to Chapter 3.56, the Measure C tax specifically, all individuals involved in commercial cannabis activity must pay it. And failure to pay it would be a violation of local law, which would meet grounds for invalidation under 17082.
I understand that, but this particular section talks about demand for payment in full.
Yes, the tax bill for the first installment and the second installment have been issued. So demand for payment in full has been made.
You're going to get an opportunity, hold on one second.
Okay.
All right, so I'm not clear about this requirement for an additional demand for payment in full.
It's just, it's in, it's in the section 3.5, 6.040 that's quoted in the, in the staff report. And it sounds as if it's, you know, might be in addition to a tax bill. That, the impression is that maybe it's a, it's a, you haven't paid the tax, you have to pay it in full. And only after he fails to pay after the demand, I'm reading it this way right now, then you have to, then you can revoke.
That's in quotations, is that a quotation out of, is, that's coming off of, on Measure C? County code, oh, it's code section of the county, I get it, okay. It's interesting, but this- We don't, okay.
Yeah, I suppose in order to sustain that particular basis for denial, we'd have to regard the invoices that were submitted, that were sent out by the tax collector as demands for payment.
And do we have those?
I could go get them for you if you would like. There was one sent out on June 15th, I mean, May 15th, and one sent out on November 15th to every single registrant or applicant.
Okay, let's, let's hear from the applicant first unless you have further questions. You want to come on up? I'm assuming you're the appellant.
Yeah, I'm Evan Usher. So anyways, appreciate your time, hear my case, and I'd like to send thanks to the planning department for their time and efforts over the past 16 months in working through this program. I know it hasn't been easy for any of the stakeholders in this program.
Some of us are getting aged and we need to have you speak slowly and clearly.
Sorry about that. First off, I mean, you guys have the property, the subject property listed as a five-acre parcel. It's in fact a 48-acre parcel. I mean, that's, you know, I don't know if that necessarily material or if you guys have the wrong parcel number or whatnot.
Could be in the future.
In the discussion points, there were a few mentions contained within them, primarily the ones that dealt with interaction with the code and planning department. On March 21st, 2017, as was stated, code compliance conducted a compliance inspection of my cultivation parcel without prior notice to myself or the property owner. On March 22nd, 2017, I had a previously unmentioned telephone call with the code officer prior to the noted email correspondence on the 22nd, in which we discussed among other items that I was currently in the process of making changes to the cultivation site, which included the removal of this existing fence in favor of a more practical fence, and that there wouldn't be any growing of cannabis in any form until the proper changes were in place. So there wasn't any cannabis growing. It was on March, you know, 21st, 2017. There's no cannabis growing and I was currently, you know, in the process of, you know, making, I guess, essentially upgrades to the first, first season of, you know, the compliance. So as clearly evident in the pictures from the site inspection, attachment four, there was no cultivation presently occurring. An fence of adequate size and structure was previously installed. It however, was in the process of being removed and replaced. Furthermore, when cultivation was previously occurring, the site met the security standards outlined in 17.95.19165.N.10 and posting standard 17.95.165.I. I mentioned that I did not anticipate commencing any cultivation activities, giving the county's uncertainty regarding the emergency ordinance.
I'm going to interrupt you for one second. I'm going to ask you, I'm going to give you a little extra time if we need it, but we need you to slow down a little bit because we're having a difficult time comprehending it. So just speak a little bit clearer and a little bit slower and I won't cut you off. I'll give you a little extra time.
Sorry, not familiar with public speaking. So let me, so basically, you know, as clearly evident in the pictures from the site inspection, which attachment four, there was no cultivation presently occurring on the property. And a fence of adequate size and structure was previously installed. It was however, in the process of being removed and replaced. Furthermore, when cultivation was previously occurring, the site met the security standards outlined and the posting standards. I mentioned that I didn't, that I did not anticipate commencing any cultivation activities, giving the county's uncertainty regarding the emergency ordinance in the recent vote. On the 27th and 28th of March, day four and five, after the initial telephone conversation, I visited the planning department, discussed the changes that were being made, in which I outlined the course of action, which was righter to code. These visits were not mentioned in the discussion piece. During these visits, I told the department that the fencing contractor that I had engaged didn't believe that he would be able to complete the entire fence within the, within the 10-day, 10-day timeframe, but that he could begin construction of the fence prior to the deadline and that it would take approximately a week to complete. I was told that this was fine as long as the contractor completed the fence within a reasonable timeframe and pictures to document it, its completion were provided, both of which requirements I satisfied. I worked in good faith to address and complete the issues within the required timeframes, even though there wasn't any cultivation presently occurring and it wouldn't be, wouldn't be occurring for at least another two months. Also during my visit of March 28th, for the building department with my hoop house permit plans, which were reviewed and stamped, I then took them to the planning department for their approval. In reviewing, in reviewing the size of the hoop house with the planning department, I was advised that it was located in a, that it was in a location in a space that I hadn't previously mentioned in my application as a cultivation site. I informed them that I was unaware that this would be an issue since I was well under the 22,000 square foot canopy size. I discussed that the hoop house was recently built during the off-season and cultivation never occurred in the space. I was advised that until the issues with the current ordinance were worked out, that I wasn't allowed to use this space. And as such, the planning department wouldn't stamp the plans since it didn't fall within the hoop house requirements pursuant to 17.95.170.A.2. In regards to the, the tax issue, you know, the county had my application since June 2017. I provided updates to their inspection concerns in March 2018. Now, I was never provided registration or license in those, in those nearly 18 months, nor was I ever provided a qualified response as to why my registration was taking so long or where my application was in the approval process. According to the planning department in the letter I received from them dated the 12th of December of 2018, my application was approved for denial eight months previous in April 2018, but due to an apparent oversight in their department, I was never informed and subsequently allowed to invest additional capital, resources, and time into my project.
Okay, why don't you stay up there in case anybody has questions for you, if that's okay? Unless they don't, then you can sit down. Does anybody have any questions for him? I can see a whole bunch coming. We're going to have you answer some questions for us, please, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Were you growing at this site in 2016?
Correct.
Did you have that area fenced at that time?
Correct.
And then I think you said you were in the process of having that fence removed and replaced in 2017?
Correct, in the off-season, we were removing. And you can see by the pictures that we had, you know, T-posts and fence up. It just wasn't, it wasn't a practical fence. It was kind of erected in haste essentially to meet the requirements of the 2016 cultivation season.
I want to make sure I understand this. Tell me again the reason you were replacing that fence?
It only had one entrance and one exit. We also had issues with, you know, animals getting into the fence and then kind of unable to get them out because it's such a large area. And they were kind of like roosting and I guess the, we had turkeys that were roosting in our, in our cultivation site.
Animals like deer?
Well, deer and primarily turkeys were our main issue.
How do you fence a turkey out?
I'm not sure, but I'm not, I'm also not a fence contractor. So I, I mean, I originally erected the first fence and it didn't work, so.
Well, was the fence that you had in 2016 adequate to keep people out?
I mean, I would assume so, yeah.
You would think so.
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you that I don't think any six-foot fence, if, if a person's so inclined, isn't, isn't going to keep them out.
Okay, how tall was the fence?
Six feet.
Six feet? What were you using the hoop house for, if anything, in March of 2017?
I mean, it wasn't used for, I mean, we decided it was used as storage at that point.
There's an email that says that you would be removing the excess canopy in March of 2017. I don't understand why that would be if you didn't have any canopy.
Well, we would be removed, I mean, I guess I meant that we didn't have any canopy, but I mean, if-
The greenhouse would have been considered canopy.
And I still don't believe, I mean, they said the excess canopy is 22,900. Like, I think the total canopy was 22,900 feet. I mean, it's, I'm not entirely sure how you, you know, gauge those extra 900 feet.
You're saying you didn't have any live plants anywhere on that site in March of 2017?
No, sir.
In 2016, did you have this cultivation area posted?
I'm sorry?
In 2016, when you were growing?
Yes.
Did you have this cultivation area posted at that time with your application pending?
Yes, sir.
What happened to that posting between 2016 and March of 2017?
We took, I mean, we've taken all the fencing out.
So it came down with the fences?
Correct, I mean, yeah. And I didn't, I didn't anticipate it being an issue since there wasn't any cultivation going on. And I didn't anticipate, you know, having to have those, those signs up until we decided, or, you know, until cultivation commenced, which would have been an additional, you know, right around June 1st, we would have probably-
Okay, and then did you cultivate in that area in 2017?
Which area?
Did you cultivate in this area in 2017?
Yes, correct.
And did you have the area posted at that time?
Yes, sir, I mean, there was pictures of it.
Those pictures don't show it's on a signboard, was it?
I'm, I'm, no.
Did it have reflective material on it?
It did not.
Okay. Okay, now have you ever gotten a permit for the hoop house?
I went through the process of getting it, but was told that I didn't need it because it wouldn't have qualified under the cultivation ordinance.
And who told you you didn't need it?
The planning department.
Who at the planning department?
I believe it was Miguel.
Miguel?
Correct.
And did he tell you why you didn't need a permit?
He told me that it didn't qualify, it didn't, because it was, it was, it was in a space that wasn't previously used for cultivation, or it wasn't previously used in my application. So I wasn't allowed to use that space for cultivation, so.
Have you taken the hoop house down?
We haven't taken the hoop house down.
Say again?
No.
So it's still there?
It's still there.
What are you using it for?
Same, it looks exactly like it did in those pictures from March of 2017.
To store stuff?
Just storage.
Did you get a tax bill for the second installment under the Measure C?
I did not, did not get a tax bill for the second installment.
When you get the first installment, it does include a bill for the second one at the same time?
I'm sorry, did you say that?
Okay, like if you have property taxes, you get one bill. And it has two installments included in that one bill payable at different times. And I'm not familiar with the Measure C tax bill. The bill that you did get, did include the second installment?
I'm unaware. I would have to, I guess I would have to go back and look at whatever the bill was.
Okay, that's all I have at this time.
On the fencing issue, you said that there was a fence up in 2016 and you took it down to put a new fence up?
Correct.
Do you have pictures of that fence, Ben Jones?
Not, not on me.
Isn't that what we're seeing in the, in the before pictures? At the time of code compliance came out there, was that the 2016 fence?
Yeah, we had, that was partial. That was basically, I mean, we were, yeah, that was to block it off. You know, that was correct.
But there was a, you're saying that there was a complete fence in 2016 going around the whole grow?
Correct.
And it was that fence that they showed us in the pictures?
Yeah, I mean, you can see that there's T-post fencing.
Well, I see that there's T-posts, I don't see any fencing there, that's all I'm asking.
Well, yeah, I mean, we had removed the fencing from the T-posts.
And this is a picture of the fencing that you erected? The fencing, you said you had a fencing contract-
Fencing contractor, yeah, you built it.
I forgot one. Have you gotten the grading permit yet for the grading?
I, we didn't do any grading, so there wasn't any grading that we did when I was in possession of the property. So any grading that occurred, occurred prior to 2015.
But do you, did you contact with somebody, Weber Deal, to obtain a grading permit?
Correct, I did. Never followed through with actually completing the project.
Why, why did you not follow through?
I guess I honestly didn't have the resources to. I mean, the fence alone cost me $15,000, so in order to complete a grading program, just, you know.
Okay, did, did you do the grading or have somebody do the grading?
The grading was done before I even took possession of the property.
Do you know why it was done?
Previous growers in 2013, I believe, did it by themselves.
Were they growing then?
They were growing, correct.
So people were growing before you came on the property?
Correct.
So you just inherited the grading issue?
I inherited the grading issue, correct.
The inspection report from March 21st of 17 includes the hoop house as in the calculations are shown on that form. Did you look at those calculations?
Which, I don't think I was provided with any of that.
You testified a few minutes ago that you didn't know how they got to the 22,900 square feet.
Correct.
So my question is, did you look at the actual form of the inspection report?
That wasn't provided.
Which appears to list on various measurements-
Yeah, this wasn't provided to me until, I mean, just a few weeks ago.
And you've never seen this before?
Never seen this, no.
Didn't you respond to emails on the 22nd after receiving this notification?
Well, I received, yeah, and I talked with the code enforcement officer and he, we had went over some emails. Is this part of the email he sent me? I'm not sure. I guess I couldn't tell you that.
That is the code compliance officer's written report of the items that had to have corrections back on March 21st in 2016.
I don't know if this was actually provided in the email.
Okay, so you just got an email with all these corrections?
I think I got an email with bullet points of things that they wanted me to correct and not with-
Okay.
I don't believe I've seen this.
I can see it documented on the, on the bullet points in here from the emails.
I don't think I actually saw where they broke out, how they computed the square footage.
Okay. When did you get, I'm stepping over you.
That's okay.
Timeout. No, I'm going to stop. No, it's your turn, I apologize.
Oh, you're, you're not done. I'm sorry.
I need to keep pushing this one because I don't understand. You say you don't know how we got to 22,900. But this one has the hoop house as part of 2,500 square feet, they claim the hoop house. So if you subtract out the 2,500, you're well under the 22,900.
Well, I actually believe that I was at 15,000, 15,000 square feet is what we had.
Correct.
What I believe that I was at, but that was kind of an unofficial, you know, measurement.
Did you, let's talk about the fencing for a second. I'm still not quite sure I got it. The old fence wasn't complete around the cultivation area or was-
No, it was, it just wasn't, I mean, the old fence was completely around all of, everything that was being cultivated. It just wasn't well-built, I guess. I mean, like I said, I mean, it, I'm not necessarily a fence builder. So I put it up with, you know, my two brothers and it just didn't work out.
Did they have a lock on it?
It had, it had everything, all of the requirements, other than I guess I didn't have a, you know, a signposting board. And I'm not entirely familiar with that.
Did you ever get the signpost board issue straightened out?
I, no, I haven't. I mean, if I, if I would have been advised that, I mean, after sending in the pictures of my corrections, I never heard a response from either the code or the planning department until I received a denial letter, which was dated December 2018. So after providing all of my responses in, in March and April, I never had any correspondence saying, hey, can you just put up a poster board or a signboard with some, with some reflective material?
Did I hear you say that you actually had an approval in April of 17?
No, that was the denial, but he just found out Monday.
Yeah, I think I messed the words up. I said I was approved for denial in, so I guess I should have just said I was denied in April of 2018.
Could I clarify that? Are you referring to the recommend, recommendation for denial that was made by code compliance dated April 6, 2017?
Yeah.
Okay, so that wasn't an actual action to deny. It was a recommendation by code compliance to planning that he had failed to comply with the correction notice that was provided. It wasn't a formal denial, it was just a recommendation by code. We just didn't, weren't able to get to it and with everything else going on until December.
All right, how about the grading permit? We talked about it a little bit, but my understanding is the county required you to do an as-built grading permit, correct? That's, is your understanding also?
I'm, I mean, I'm not-
After the fact?
After the fact.
You'd already done the grading, you can come in and get an as-built permit.
As-built, yeah, so we had, I had the engineers, and I think that the bill was going to be, you know, somewhere around $7,500. And at that point, I honestly didn't have $7,500 to complete an as-built grading permit for a grading that was done. And it might have been done, you know, in 2013 or 2014.
All right, so the March 22, 17 email from you to Thomas Watts says, "I've contacted David Barr from the firm Weber Deal to conduct the requisite site visit, surveying, and documentation for the existing as-built grading per the county's requirements. I will be forwarding their engagement letter shortly for documentation purposes." So you never followed up on it? You never, you didn't engage that company?
Well, I did, I mean- Well, I did, I mean, we, we, me and, uh, the engineer, we went through photos and whatnot. You know, I just didn't have the, I didn't have the fund required.
You didn't hire him?
I didn't hire him, I couldn't hire him.
Back on the fencing. The, so the 2016 fence was taken down mostly. At the time of code compliance's visit, like what was left was what was left of the 2016 fence, correct?
Correct.
And then, uh, you got these notices, you found the fencing contractor, you were in the process of, of replacing it with a better fence when you took the photographs that, that you provided for proof of compliance, is that correct?
Correct, the photographs that I provided.
I'm sorry, yeah?
The photographs that I provided are of a,
Okay.
Of the fence.
Yeah, and so, those, the fence wasn't completed then. Was the fence totally completed before you had any cannabis in the ground in 2017?
Correct, I mean, you can tell that the fencing is, there's no cannabis in the ground and the, the fencing is, the fencing is done.
Well, the, the problem the county has with that is that we're not seeing all, all, apparently they, they needed more photographs to be convinced that all the fencing was done.
I, I mean, it's, it's gonna be the same way with electrical, I mean, how am I, if, if they didn't, if, if the pictures weren't satisfactory enough, I don't understand why I wasn't, it advised immediately that I should, or I would have engaged code enforcement to come out and actually walk the property with me.
So, then maybe I misspoke. At the time of these pictures, was the fencing completed?
The fencing was completed, uh, I think by April 10th, which would have been.
Okay, so that's after these pictures?
I think, no, no, these.
Oh, these are, those are.
These are correction photos.
Okay. And at that point, there was no cannabis growing?
There was no cannabis, there, there wasn't any cannabis growing until the middle of June.
Till the middle of June. And where, where did you get your young plants to plant for 2017?
Local nurseries.
Okay.
I don't actually live in County Irish County, I have two young boys and a wife. My wife's a teacher in, in San Diego, so I, I live primarily there. So, I'm only up here, um, you know, during the, the growing season, which for me is June until October.
Okay. And in 2017, you cultivated in the fenced area, but not in the hoop house, correct?
Correct.
And you've never cultivated in the hoop house?
Never cultivated, I mean, that was the, I mean, correct. Never cultivated in the hoop house after my initial meeting with the planning department on the 28th or 27th when I had, um, when I had the stamped files from the planning department.
The question is, that hoop house has only been used for storage, never, never growing?
Never grown in.
That's all I have right now.
Okay, um, if it's okay with you, I'd like to maybe have Mr. Watts come up and just give some clarity for us. Taking you back a few months.
Pardon?
I said, we're taking you back a few months.
Uh, yeah, just a little bit, it's a little bit hazy now.
So, you, your last time out there was in March of 2017?
Uh, yes, I've only been there once.
I'm sorry?
Um, I've only been to the site once.
Okay.
Um, yeah, March 21st, 2017.
And so, the photos that he sent back, did you, well, let me rephrase this. Did you see any evidence when you were there of previous fencing? Or did you see just that the posts were in the ground and there was no evidence of fencing being tore out?
There were the posts in the ground, yeah. I think, I think you can even see in some of those pictures there, there's some like, um, like the plastic netting that's rolled up. So, there probably was some fencing there at some point.
Okay.
I can't really say what it was or what it looked like.
Okay. And the pictures that he submitted showing that he was fixing those issues came in beyond the ten days? And then, my question would be that the notice that you send out and that we've seen in the past typically said that we would like to see you working on these items and get started within the ten-day period. Did this give him ten days or did it say we want to see progress within ten days?
I have a copy here. It said, "Proof of these corrections must be provided within ten days, beginning March 22nd, 2017." And then, there is an attached document which included various types of evidence and,
Okay.
you know, sending correct photos.
That was written pretty clearly, it wasn't nineteen days, it was within the ten days you wanted the pictures, okay.
Um, I do, I do remember that we did have a conversation, at least one conversation on the phone. But I can't recall what we discussed. So, it's possible that I allowed him some extra time on the fence. We have done that in the past.
It's very possible that you did what on the fence?
Allowed some extra time to put the fence up.
Extra time, possibly, okay. Okay, since this appeal, have you received any new pictures showing that the fencing was definitely completed? The lock was on, the, everything looks fantastic photos?
Uh, no, nothing since those correction photos were sent. But I just didn't have the time to reply to them. At the time, I'd already sent over the recommendation for denial. And that was the point, we were, we were working overtime just to get through all the inspections and follow up.
Okay. Any further questions for him?
You, you did instruct him that the, the hoop house requires a permit?
Yes.
And have you ever gotten in, information from the planning department or anyplace else that that wasn't correct?
No. It's possible planning had an issue with it because it wasn't included on the plot plan. But under the building codes, anything over a hundred and twenty square feet needs a permit.
Whether you're using it for cultivation or not?
Yeah, regardless of what it's used for.
So, there have been some change in policy with the building department regarding hoop houses. And I believe it was last fall, so fall of 2016 or maybe early 2017, the building department issued a, sort of set of guidelines for hoop houses. And as Tom stated, if it's under a hundred and twenty square, square feet, didn't require a permit as long as there was no plumbing or electrical attached to it. If it was, I don't remember all the guidelines, but there were three different types of permits were necessary depending on how it was constructed and how large it was. Later, the, the current building official rescinded that, stating there's no way that under the building code, you can allow these temporary type structures. That they have to be fully engineered and used as a commercial structure. So, we stopped issuing permits for hoop houses. I don't recall exactly when that was, I want to say it was probably last summer that that policy changed.
I think it was probably more recent than that because it was since Ed Short came on board.
Okay, so when, after Ed Short came on board, that, that, that decision to allow the, the temporary structures to be permitted. And so, we stopped issuing permits. But at the time when this inspection was made in the direction to get permits, that was the practice of the county was to issue permits, temporary permits for hoop houses. And they could be up for, I think, a maximum of a hundred and twenty days, if I recall.
And this was whether they were used for cultivation or not?
And it didn't really matter how they were used. And in this case, there was electrical to it, so it clearly required a permit. I know they later, it appears that they removed the electrical from that. But the size of it would definitely require a permit. Or, uh, under the new practice of the, of the department, that it could not be permitted and therefore would need to be removed.
Chair, I have a question for him, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Tom, you mentioned that there's a, an adequate evidence of correction information sheet? So, would you tell us what is in that information sheet? What it tells the person who's been provided with notice of correction, they need to do with regard to evidence of correction?
Yeah, sure, I don't have a copy here, but from memory, it states, it provides guidance on what types of photos to submit, telling the registrant to, you know, take pictures from various different distances so we can see what it is that we're looking at and that sort of thing. It also clearly states that it's the, the registrant's responsibility to stay in touch with us and to provide, provide proof that all these corrections have been taken care of.
In March, were you using that sheet?
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't have a copy here, but I'm assuming from my email saying, see the attached guidance.
Okay, good, okay, so we have documentation on that, perfect. Okay, any further questions? We'll come back, hold on. Nope? Okay, then I'm gonna go, any rebuttal from you?
Nope.
Okay, now your turn.
I guess the only issue I have with that is, I provided my response to code and to the planning department and I never received any response back. So, if, if the, the photos weren't sufficient enough, I should have been given the opportunity to provide sufficient photos. I never heard from the planning department or from code from March of 2017 until I received the letter in December of 2018.
I have a question on, completely a different subject, on the, the taxes. Did, did you get the, a tax bill for the first payment?
Correct.
And, and did you pay that?
I have not paid that tax bill.
Not paid that. Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I should say, and that was the only written notice you had that the tax was due, correct?
I only received the, the, the mayor, the June tax bill.
Yeah.
And I believe that the second tax bill I never received because I was under, you know, uh, den- denial.
Okay, thanks.
So, it, when you say that you never, it's March 24th, you sent your photos on, what date were those photos sent in?
Nineteen days after.
His photos?
Three twenty-one, 2017 is when he was there. Do you know what day you sent your photos in?
It was sometime in April, April, it would have been 10th, 10th or 6th. But I had previously on day four or five of the inspection period, I went to planning department and I laid out what was going on and I let them know why, uh, you know, that the fencing was going to be delayed only because, you know, the fencing contractor couldn't start immediately and it was gonna take him a week to complete, so. And that was, so.
Okay, so, and then you didn't get any response saying the pictures you sent in are not adequate? And you had a guidance sheet telling you what to do and how to submit the photos and take them for proof, right?
I, I can't verify that I had a, a guidance sheet.
Been a while.
But I definitely, I, I didn't receive, and I understood that code and the planning department were extremely busy. So, I had anticipated that that was, you know, just kind of the standard course of action if, you know, what I submitted was, met the requirements that you just basically didn't hear anything back from them.
Okay, but you didn't meet all the requirements because we didn't get grading permits finished and we didn't pay the taxes, so we're still have things lingering out there that we didn't finish.
I, I guess the, the tax issue wasn't part of what Thomas had, had.
No, no, it wasn't, I understand. The grading issue?
Again, I'm sorry, at the, at the, at the moment when I engaged the, the firm, I didn't understand that it was going to be a, you know, a seven, you know, a seven to ten thousand dollar expense.
Right. Okay, any further?
Yeah, you're, you have the burden of proof before us, so I want to make sure that you have every chance to assert your evidence. So, can, you can clearly state that in 2017 and 2016, you had a six-foot fence around your grow when there was cannabis in the ground, is that correct?
Hundred percent correct.
Okay. And as far as the electrical goes, you picked up all the extension cords, you unconnected the Romex, or whatever electrical stuff was being strewn out of the ground. All of that was, uh, collected by you and disconnected and never reconnected during your 2017 grow, is that correct?
Correct, and, and had I had the benefit of having the pictures that code enforcement, Thomas had taken, I would have understood how he wanted me to respond with, you know, picture correction so I could show that the issue.
I just want to get your, your.
But I didn't have those until December of 2018. Had I had them, I would have taken pictures showing that, you know, the run of Romex cable, you know, wasn't there any longer and it wasn't just in a, you know, in a, in a giant roll, unconnected.
But, but it's, you can assert that you corrected all that stuff?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There, there is an email April 13th from Mr. Watts saying that he had received your April 10th email. And in your email, you'd said the builders were a little overconfident, delay. Then here's a PDF file to show compliance with other issues. So, three days after your email, Mr. Watts recommended you for denial. Did you follow up on that?
I don't believe that was actually sent to me, his, his recommendation for denial. I only received that in the package of December 2018.
All right.
That was, yeah.
Email was sent to the planning department.
Okay, so.
Well, at that time, what Thomas was saying in the email is no permits were pulled, so he didn't comply in the ten-day period.
There was one question I have, he said he did not receive a tax bill for the second bill, which would have gone out in November. Yet, this was not denied until December, so he should have got a tax bill. I don't know if it matters in the case of this hearing, but we can, if you'd like, I can get verification from the tax collector whether or not a bill went out on this, for this site.
Are we gonna be seeing several of these? Well, does it really matter? He didn't pay the first one, then he said he got that one.
Uh, just, it's a question of view, if you, if you think.
In the future, I think we're gonna want clarification on that.
Okay. It just, I, I don't know if, if it makes a difference to you, I can, we can take a short break, I can run over the tax collector, but if it doesn't make a difference, then we don't need to waste time doing that.
Well, it was the first one that we're looking at, so. Okay, I think we're good. We'll go ahead and close the hearing, bring it back to the commission. There's no public comment because there's nobody here to comment publicly. But I should ask in case. Okay, so I'll bring it back to the commissioners for deliberation.
Okay, I'll start. I'm not convinced you have sufficient evidence of a fencing and failure to lock violation because you have to have live medical cannabis, cannabis plants at the cultivation area to have the fencing requirement and the locking requirement. And the evidence from the applicant is that he did in 2016 and he did in 2017 when he was growing. And so, I'm not prepared to deny the appeal on that ground. Seems to me to be a violation of the posting certificate, however, because that's never been done properly under, during either growing season, 2016 or 2017. And there have not been permits for the grading or the hoop house, either one. So, I think those are continuing violations. It may not be a permit violation now in the hoop house, but it's a, having, in it, having it in existence violation. If there are no more permits, but it's, it has to be removed and it's not. And it's, seems to me that you just can't fail to pay the required tax and keep your registration. That's a violation of local law and it's, that's, that's happened. On at least one occasion, maybe two. I don't know that there's any requirement for a demand, but if there is, a bill ought to suffice. To me, that's a demand for payment when you get a bill. I think that covers it from my standpoint.
I actually agree with Kelly. My only issue with the fence, there's some evidence that there was possibly a fence there sometime. And then he took it down, and then he rebuilt it. I kind of have questions of whether it goes all the way around, but that's a whole different thing. But the taxes and the building permits never got taken care of, and the grading permit, never. And he never fixed the sign. He admitted that.
Yeah, I agree on the permit posting. The hoop house simply needed a permit, didn't get one. Grading permit, he's admitted he just didn't pay for it. Hazardous electrical, I'm not so sure about that one. He did show photos of coiled up extension cords there. Proof of a negale, I guess. Canopy size, that's an odd one. All he had to do was take down the hoop house. He would have solved two problems without.
What about the taxes?
Taxes, he didn't pay them.
Well, he didn't. Okay, my turn. He didn't pay the taxes, but when you have a section in the code, three point five, six point oh four oh, that specifically puts in a phrase, "After demand for payment in full," failure to pay the tax after demand for payment in full shall constitute grounds for registration. I guess, I mean, it could be read that in addition to a bill, when somebody doesn't pay their tax, they go back, the county's supposed to go back and say, "Hey, really, pay this tax. We're really serious." But when you state it that way, it sounds rather foolish. So I, I guess the bill itself can count as a demand for payment in full. Doesn't say after receipt of demand for payment in full, since he received the first bill and refused to pay it, and doesn't believe that he received a second bill, he was well aware of the requirements of the tax. I guess we'd have to assume that the county did its duty in sending out the second bill, because that would be even the county's point of view, in the county's benefit. And so I guess I, I agree. I'm not sure, Commissioner Booster, if you handled the electrical. What did you say on the electrical?
I didn't, I didn't say anything about it.
Yeah, okay.
But I don't, I'm not prepared to include that as a ground.
I agree. Okay, so I, I agree with, with you as far as not including the fencing and locking, and not including the, the electrical, but going with the rest.
Okay. I mean, one way or the other, it's, we've got some compliance issues, and I, if there was a letter of guidance on how those photos are supposed to be taken in proof on the electrical, and it didn't meet it, I can see why they're still including it. We can see where he took corrective actions on that. They may not be the perfect photos to prove otherwise, but there's other issues here that I will go ahead and go along with you guys on those removals. Okay? Recommendation, please?
Is there consensus direction?
There was a big consensus. I think everybody agreed on the electrical. Do you want to make changes before he reads the recommendation?
I think what the sense of the commission is that the first ground for denial, paragraph one, would be deleted. And then, under the, what was the third ground, now the second ground for denial, other violations, the sentence additionally hazardous electrical work was also identified by code compliance would be deleted. And that's the only changes that I see.
Everybody else good?
Yep.
Okay, we'll take the recommendation now, please, as amended.
All right. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution twenty-eighteen zero zero seven as amended, thus denying appeal twenty-sixteen seven thirty-two, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to deny application twenty-sixteen seven thirty-two.
Okay. The only other thing that I would say before we take any action here is that he was doing a correction on his acres to forty-eight acres. Maybe we can just verify that, because that should be corrected in case there's changes going down the road.
The reference to the five acres was just in the staff report. It wasn't included in their resolution.
Okay.
I think, you know, looking at the aerial image that had the parcels, I would concur that it just, it did appear to be larger than five acres. So I would, you know, probably agree that it, it was probably forty-eight acres or somewhere in that, that range. But it doesn't really matter as far as the, the actions being taken today.
Okay. So can I get a motion to his recommendation, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so I have Booster, Commissioner Sisk, one of them, both of them gave it to you. Take it, Wusters, and Bichelli, second. Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, motion carries.
So this action is final unless it is appealed to the Board of Supervisors within fifteen calendar days from today's date.
Okay. We don't have any study sessions today, but do any of the commissioners have anything they need to report out on?
No.
Nope. Okay. Planning Director report?
No reports. Let me just, an announcement, I will not be here for the next meeting. We do have a fairly long agenda, but my capable staff will be more than up to the task.
Okay. And I guess that's it. Do you want to tell me?
He got the appeal.
He got it.
Okay, so, capable staff. I guess we're done, and we can adjourn this meeting.
That sounds good.
Thank you, everybody. It was good to see you all again.